The 21st Regular Session of the 10th Sanggunian Panunusod is now called to order. We are requesting the Secretary to the Sanggunian for the roll call and determination of quorum.
The attendants for today's regular session, the regular presiding officer, Honorable Evalore N. Estabilio is present, Honorable Leo D. Revita is still out, Honorable Melitondi Lemos is on official business, Honorable Ms. Yara Isabel Uy Salazar is present, Honorable Vreni Gem O. Caasi is present, Honorable Agripino G. Kokilia Jr. is present, Honorable Rex Jasper R. Aala is present, Honorable Romeo L. Catayas is present, Honorable Catherine S. Elliott is present, Honorable Ed Mark O. Wakan is present, Honorable Arthur V. Ong Jr. is present, Honorable Datu Eric I. Perez is present, Honorable Roan Angela G. Rilyon is present, and Honorable Batovina S. Rubinos is present. Madam President, there are 12 members present. There is a quorum.
There being a quorum, this session is in order. Let us now proceed to the opening prayer to beloved Honorable Catherine S. Elliott, followed by the singing of the Pambansang Awit, the panunumpa ng katapatan sa Watawat ng Pilipinas, the counselor's creed, and singing of the Tagum Mabuhay ka march.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather for this 21st regular session, we come before you with grateful hearts for the opportunity to serve our community and fulfill our duties. Grant us wisdom to make thoughtful, just decisions that honor the needs of all people. Fill our hearts with unity that we may work together in harmony, setting aside differences to pursue what is good and right. Guide our words and actions to be rooted in fruit, passion, and integrity so that this session may bring about positive change, progress, and hope for those who serve. Protect each member present, grant us clarity of mind, and strengthen our commitment to upholding the values that bind our community. May this 21st session be marked by purpose, collaboration, and a shared vision for a better future. In your holy name, we pray, amen.
Mga kababayan ang Pambansang Awit ng Pilipinas. Kayang magiliw, helas na si Rakanan, alam ng puso, sana't ikoy buhay. Upang pinira, uya ka ng mahiting, sa manlulupin, ikapasisin il. San'yan na naktukop sa simoyat, isanan itong pagbawal. Ayun na naktukla ka'wis sa pagkayang ni damahar. Ang isang tao at kawat, uya ka dun kay naranikinig. Ang ituwi na taro niya kayda, pamay ni ba titinig. Upang na paraw ng warhatik pa'nsingka, uya ka mit sa bibilho. Ami ni gaya na par kayo ngapi, ang pa'makay ng dahil sa'yo.
Sa katapatan ng Watawat. Ako ay Pilipino, buong katapatang nanunumpa sa Watawat ng Pilipinas. At sa bansang kanyang sinasagisag na may dangan, katarungan, at kalayaan na pinaki kilos ng sambayan ng maka Diyos, maka Tao, makakalikasan, at makabansa. The counselor's creed. I am Pilipino counselor mandated by law to enact measures and practices that were down to the general welfare of my constituents in their pursuit for happiness, peace, and prosperity. I believe in public service above self as the guiding principles of my official act. Of local legislation, may the Almighty guide my mind and heart that I shall be true to my constituents and to the Filipino people.
Sa lupain ng pangako ay may isang paraiso. Ang matatag at matatayo niyang mundo ay sagana sa saging at into. Mga hugig niya't mga parang at mga lunti ang balayan. Sa ang lapu magumiyo pagmabasta, nituy larawan ng kasagahan. Tagum mabuhay ka, tagum mabuhay ka, na sa'yo ang hukas na walang kasing ganda. Tagum mabuhay ka, tagum mabuhay ka, para isong puno ng pagasa. Ang lahat niyang nasasakupad, nagmamahal sa kapayapaan. Nagkakaisa lahat at nakutulungan patungo sa mikin ka unlaran. Di magtatagal maabot din lahat ng pinapangarap natin. Kapit ng may lahat ay ating harapin, ang kukuk ay kaya nating abutin. Tagum mabuhay ka, tagum mabuhay ka, na sa'yo ang hukas na walang kasing ganda. Tagum mabuhay ka, tagum mabuhay ka, para isong puno ng pagasa. Tagum mabuhay ka, tagum mabuhay ka, na sa'yo ang hukas na walang kasing ganda. Tagum mabuhay ka, tagum mabuhay ka, para isong puno ng pagasa. Para isong puno ng pagasa.
Good afternoon, everyone. Let us now proceed to the reading and consideration of the minutes and Journal of Proceedings of the 20th Regular Session held on December 1, 2025. The Committee Chairperson on Laws, Rules, Regulations, and Privileges Attorney Ed Mark Wakan is recognized.
Madam Presiding Officer, considering that each and every member has been furnished with a copy of the minutes of the 20th Regular Session dated December 1, 2025 consisting of 190 pages, I therefore move to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the 20th Regular Session.
Seconded by Counselors Kokilia, Aala, Elliott, and Rubinos, is there any discussion, amendment, objection? There being none, therefore, the reading of the full text of the minutes of the 20th Regular Session is hereby dispensed with.
Madam Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of the minutes dated December 1, 2025 of the 20th Regular Session consisting of 190 pages.
Moved by Counselor Wakan, seconded by Counselors Aala, Caasi, Kokilia, and Rubinos, is there any discussion, amendment, objection? There being none, therefore, the minutes of the 20th Regular Session held on December 1, 2025 consisting of 190 pages is hereby adopted. Proceed.
Madam Presiding Officer, for the same reason that the Journal of the Proceedings of the 20th Regular Session dated December 1, 2025 has been furnished to each and every member of the 10th City Council, I therefore move to dispense with the reading in full text of the said minute, ah, journal, rather.
Is there any second? Seconded by Counselors Uy Salazar, Rilyon, Aala, and Kokilia, there being no objection, the reading of the full text of the Journal of Proceedings is dispensed with.
I move for the approval of the Journal of the 20th Regular Session dated December 1, 2025 consisting a total of 52 pages, Madam Presiding Officer.
Moved by Counselor Wakan, seconded by Counselor Aala, is there any discussion, amendment, objection? There being none, therefore, the Journal of Proceedings consisting of 52 pages is hereby adopted. Thank you very much, Counselor Wakan. Let us now proceed to the privilege hour. Any member would like to avail of the privilege? There being none, let's proceed to the question hour. Do we have invited guests?
We have none, Madam President.
There being none, let us now proceed to the reading and referral of proposed measures.
For our measures on first reading, we have items in their letters and communications. Number one, we have this letter dated November 27 coming from the Honorable City Mayor Ray T. Uy. This pertains to the draft Extrajudicial Settlement of Estate with absolute deed of donation for the road right of way located at Barangay Magkilang Tagum City in favor of the City Government of Tagum with the following donors: Letter A, heirs of Remedios Cia. Espiritu et al., and Letter B, Armenia Q. Vida de Sansano et al.
Item number one is referred to the Committee on Housing and Land Utilization and Committee on Laws, Rules, Regulations, and Privileges.
For item number two, we have this letter dated November 28 coming from the Honorable City Mayor Ray T. Uy pertaining to the draft memorandum of agreement between the Philippine Statistics Authority of PSA and the City Government of Tagum for the use and/or implementation of the BACH Request System or BREX.
Item number two is referred to the Committee on Science and Technology and Laws, Rules, Regulations, and Privileges.
Number three, letter dated November 28 coming from the Honorable City Mayor Ray T. Uy pertaining to the draft memorandum of agreement for the implementation of the extended Tagum City Local Civil Registry System specifically designed for hospitals, lying-ins, maternity clinics operating in Tagum City.
Item number three is referred to the Committee on Science and Technology and Laws, Rules, Regulations, and Privileges.
Number four, letter dated December 1 coming from the Honorable City Mayor Ray T. Uy pertaining to the documents relative to the public auction conducted last October 8, 2025 for reference in the issuance of a resolution authorizing the local chief executive to enter into and sign for and in behalf of the City Government of Tagum the deed of absolute sale with a vendy, a vendy or vendees.
Item number four is referred to the Committee on Public Works, Facilities and Utilities and Laws, Rules, Regulations, and Privileges.
Number five, letter dated December 2 coming from the Honorable City Mayor Ray T. Uy pertaining to the supplemental budget number five series of 2025 of the City of Tagum appropriating the sum of 12,85340 pesos and 95 centavos.
Item number five is referred to the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations.
Number six, letter dated December 3, 2025 coming from Honorable Muhammad Alid J. Mamah Saraya, SK Chairperson of barangay Malupo Poblacion pertaining to the annual budget for calendar year 2026 of the Sangguniyang Kabataan of barangay Malupo Poblacion in the amount of 1,026,317 pesos and 90 centavos.
Item number six is referred to the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations, Youth and Sports Development, and Barangay Affairs.
Item number seven, letter dated November 26, 2025 coming from Honorable Randy A. Laguna, the punong barangay of Magupu South. This pertains to the annual budget for calendar year 2026 of the Sangguniyang barangay of Magupu South in the amount of 17,564,751 pesos only.
Item number seven is referred to the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations and Barangay Affairs.
And the last item, number eight, letter dated November 28 coming from Honorable Alden P. Pereiras, the punong barangay of Magupu West. This pertains to the annual budget for calendar year 2026 of the Sangguniyang barangay of Magupu West in the amount of 26,25583 pesos only.
Item number eight is referred to the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations and Barangay Affairs. Let us now proceed to the committee reports. First report is from the Joint Committees on Youth and Sports Development, Finance, Budget, Appropriations, and Barangay Affairs. Our SK Federation President, Honorable Roan Rilyon is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. Presenting you the Joint Committee Report number four series of 2025 submitted by the Committees on Youth and Sports Development, Finance, Budget, and Appropriation, and Barangay Affairs with the following subject matters. For the 15th Regular Session, letter referral number five, letter dated October 21, 2025 from Honorable Nikahfort Hauado, SK Chairperson of barangay. From the 18th Regular Session, letter referral number eight, letter dated November 10, 2025 from Honorable Valence B. Palaroan, SK Chairperson of barangay Apokon, addressed to Honorable Evalore N. Estabilio, City Vice Mayor through Mr. Ray A. Buhiyon, Secretary to the Sanggunian, duly received by the Office of the Secretary to the Sanggunian on November 12, 2025. The herein supplemental budget number one for calendar year 2025 is dispensed with. Madam Presiding Officer, I move for its adoption.
Is there any discussion, amendment, objection? There being none, therefore...
To dispense the reading of its full text.
Moved by Counselor Kokilia, duly seconded by Counselors Aala, Elliott, Rubinos, and Rilyon. There being no objection, the reading of its full text is dispensed with.
I move, Madam Presiding Officer, for its adoption.
Is there any discussion, amendment, objection? There being none, therefore, Committee Report number nine submitted by the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations is hereby adopted. Next Committee Report, proceed, Counselor Kokilia.
Another Madam Presiding Officer, may I have the honor to present to this 10th Sanggunian Panglongsood the Joint Committee Report number seven, series 2025.
Committee Report number seven submitted by the Committees on Finance, Budget, and Appropriation, and Barangay Affairs is hereby adopted.
Another Madam Presiding Officer, representing the three committees, the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriation, Committee on Youth and Sports, and Committee on Barangay Affairs, may I respectfully submit this and/or forward this Joint Committee Report number six series 2025. This was conducted last December 3, 2025 at 12:05 PM. Held in this hall with the following subject matter. One was taking up the Joint Committee, the three committees deliberated the annual budget for calendar year of barangay of Sangguniyang Kabataan of Magupu North amounting to 1,535,471 pesos. The second item which was deliberated by the Joint Committee was that of the annual budget for calendar year 2026 of the Sangguniyang Kabataan of barangay Visayan Village amounting to 6,125,068 pesos and 20 centavos. And lastly, item number three that was deliberated by the Joint Committee was that of the annual budget for calendar year 2026 of Sangguniyang Kabataan of San Isidro amounting to 977,600 pesos. Again, Madam Presiding Officer, with assumption that all members of this 10th Sanggunian Panglongsood have already read the full content of this Joint Committee Report number six series 2025, I therefore move to dispense the reading of its full text.
Moved by Counselor Kokilia, seconded by Counselors Aala, Elliott, and Rubinos, there being no objection, the reading of its full text is dispensed with.
I therefore move, Madam Presiding Officer, for its adoption.
Is there any discussion, amendment, objection? There being none, therefore, Joint Committee Report number six submitted by the Committees on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations, Youth and Sports Development, and Barangay Affairs is hereby adopted. Next Committee Report from the Committee on Health, Counselor Uy Salazar is recognized.
This is to render Committee Report number four series of 2025 submitted by the Committee on Health. The subject matter hereof is the 20th Regular Session, letter item, Resolution number 22, series of 2025, reporting the Tagum HIV investment plan for calendar years 2024 to 2025.
Moved by Counselor Uy Salazar, seconded by Counselors Rilyon and Caasi, there being no objection, the reading of the full text of this Committee Report is dispensed with.
I move for its adoption.
Is there any discussion, amendment, objection? There being none, therefore, Committee Report number four submitted by the Committee on Health is hereby adopted. Next Committee Report.
Madam Chair.
Counselor Caasi is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is to render Joint Committee Report number six series of 2025 by Committee on Agriculture and Food, and Committee on Laws, Rules, Regulations, and Privileges on December 3, 2025, 8:00 AM at SP Session Hall with two subject matters. First is the letter referral number 18 dated January 27, 2025, the establishment of the coastal green belt zone and adopting a local coastal green belt management action plan in the city of Tagum. Second is the letter dated number one on the 11th Regular Session, the herein draft city organ, herein draft city ordinance institutionalizing the community-based training on slaughter operation of the City Government of Tagum providing its implementing guidelines, providing fund thereof and other purposes for other action. This, Madam Chair, I move to dispense with the reading of Joint Committee Report number six series of 2025.
Moved by Counselor Caasi, seconded by Counselors Aala, Rilyon, and Revita. There being no objection, the reading of its full text is dispensed.
DOD. And with that, Madam Chair, this also aligns for the intent of Republic Act 7279, the Urban Development and Housing Act of 1992, which emphasizes the protect, to protect the housing beneficiaries and ensuring that socialized housing resources remains available and beneficial to the intended low-income families. With this, Madam Chair, I move for its adoption.
Is there any discussion, amendment, objection? There being none, therefore, Committee Report number three submitted by the Committee on Housing and Land Utilization is adopted. Next Committee Report from the Committee on Gender, Counselor Revita is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joint Committee Report number one series of 2025 submitted by the Committee on Gender Equality and Development, Children and Family Welfare and Social Services, and the Committee on Education, held at SP Session Hall at 9:00 AM with the subject matter, Resolution number 312, series of 2025, a resolution congratulating Dick the Bid T. Ong King, RND, a graduate of the University of the Philippines, Dileman, for ranking top five in the November 2025 nutritionist dietitian licensure examination. Since a copy of the said Joint Committee Report number one has been distributed in advance to this August body, I move to dispense with the reading of its full text.
Moved by Counselor Revita, seconded by Counselors Aala, Rubinos, Uy Salazar, and Rilyon. There being no objection, the reading of its full text is dispensed with.
I move for its adoption, Madam Chair.
Is there any discussion, amendment, objection? There being none, therefore, Joint Committee Report number one submitted by the Committee on Gender Equality and Development, Children, Family Welfare and Social Services, and the Committee on Education is hereby adopted. Let us now proceed to the next order of business, the calendar of business. What is the pleasure of the Committee Chairperson on Laws, Rules, Regulations, and Privileges Attorney Ed Mark Wakan?
Madam President, I move for the approval of the calendar of business as stated in the notice of the 21st Regular Session dated December 9, 2025 consisting of three pages.
Moved by Counselor Wakan, seconded by Counselors Kokilia, Uy Salazar, and Rilyon. Is there any discussion, any amendment? Counselor Kokilia is recognized, followed by Counselor Rilyon.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. May I ask the support from the Secretary to the Sanggunian on allocation of resolution number?
Madam Chair, that would be Resolution number 367.
Thank you. I move for inclusion under an assigned business, draft resolution number 36707, 367, series of 2025 with a title, "A Resolution Confirming the Annual Budget for Calendar Year 2026 of barangay San Isidro, Tagum City," amounting to 9,776,000 pesos only. I so move for its inclusion.
Moved by Counselor Kokilia, seconded by Counselors Aala, Elliott, Rubinos, Revita, and Rilyon. There being no objection, Resolution number 367 is included under an assigned business. Proceed.
Another Madam Presiding Officer, I move for inclusion under an assigned business, draft resolution number 368, series of 2025 with a title, "A Resolution Confirming the Annual Budget for Calendar Year 2026 of barangay Madaom, Tagum City," amounting to 23,695,000 pesos only. I so move for its inclusion.
Moved by Counselor Kokilia, seconded by Counselors Aala, Rubinos, Wakan, Rilyon, and Revita. There being no objection, the Resolution number 368 is included under an assigned business.
Another Madam Presiding Officer, as recommended by, also recommended by the Joint, by the Committee, by the Joint Committee, allow me to move for inclusion under an assigned business, draft resolution number 369, series of 2025 with a title, "A Resolution Confirming the Annual Budget for Calendar Year 2026." "A Resolution Confirming the Annual Budget for Calendar Year 2026 of Barangay Magupu North, Tagom City", amounting to 15,354,713 pesos only. I assume for its inclusion.
Moved by Councillor Kokilia, seconded by Councillors Revita, Uys Salazar, Rubinos, Rilyon, and Wakan. There being no objection, therefore, Resolution Number 369 is included under an assigned business. Proceed.
Another, Madam Presiding Officer, as a result of the adapted, just adapted joint committee report number six with the recommendation for inclusion, I move for inclusion under an assigned business, Drop Resolution Number 370, series of 2025, with the title, "A Resolution Confirming the Sangunian Kabataan SK annual budget for calendar year 2026 of Barangay Magupu North, Tagom City", amounting to 1,535,471 pesos and 30 centavos only. I assume for its inclusion.
Moved by Councillor Kokilia, seconded by Councillors Aala and Rilyon, and also Wakan. There being no objection, therefore, Resolution Number 370 is included under an assigned business.
Another, Madam Presiding Officer, I move for inclusion under an assigned business, Drop Resolution Number 371, series of 2025, with the title, "A Resolution Confirming the Sangunian Kabataan SK annual budget for calendar year 2026 of Barangay Visayan Village, Tagom City", amounting to 6,125,068 pesos and 20 centavos only. I assume, Madam Presiding Officer.
Moved by Councillor Kokilia, seconded by Councillors Rilyon and Wakan. There being no objection, therefore, Resolution Number 371 is included under an assigned business.
And lastly, Madam Presiding Officer, I move for inclusion under an assigned business, Drop Resolution Number 372, series 2025, with the title, "A Resolution Confirming the Sangunian Kabataan SK annual budget for calendar year 2026 of Barangay San Isidro, Tagom City", amounting to 977,600 pesos only. I assume for its inclusion.
Moved by Councillor Kokilia, seconded by Councillors Revita, Rubinos, Aala, and Wakan. There being no objection, therefore, the resolution number 372 is included under an assigned business. Councillor Rilyon is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. Would like to ask the secretary, Madam Presiding Officer, on the resolution number?
That will be Resolution 373.
Thank you. I, Madam Presiding Officer, I move for the inclusion of Resolution Number 373, series of 2025, "A Resolution Confirming Supplemental Budget Number Two for calendar year 2025 of the Sangunian Kabataan of Barangay Kanukutan", amounting to 171,000 pesos under the unassigned business.
Moved by Councillor Rilyon, seconded by Councillor Wakan. There being no objection, therefore, Resolution Number 373 is included under an assigned business.
Another, Madam Presiding Officer, I move for the inclusion of Resolution Number 374, series of 2025, "A Resolution Confirming Supplemental Budget Number One for calendar year 2025 of the Sangunian Kabataan of Barangay Apukon", amounting to 1,996,557 pesos and 17 centavos under unassigned business.
Moved by Councillor Rilyon, seconded by Councillor Aala. There being no objection, therefore, Resolution Number 374 is included under an assigned business. Some more inclusions. Councillor Uys Salazar is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. I pay after a draft resolution number from our secretary to the Sangunian.
That's Resolution 375, Madam.
37. Madam Presiding Officer?
The Chair declares for a few missed recess. I hatag nalang na kay Patayas. Wala naman siya. Councillor Uys Salazar.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. I move for inclusion under an assigned business, Drop Resolution Number 375, series of 2025, "A Resolution Adopting the Tagom City HIV Investment Plan for calendar years 2024 to 2030."
Moved by Councillor Uys Salazar, seconded by Councillors Aala, Revita, Eliot, and Wakan. There being no objection, therefore, Resolution Number 375 is included under an assigned business. Some more inclusions. Councillor Revita.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For inclusion under an assigned business, Resolution Number 312, series of 2025, "A Resolution Congratulating Dick the Bit Ong King", a graduate of the University of the Philippines di Leman for ranking top five in the November 2025 Nutrition Dietitian Licenseure Examination. I assume, Madam Presiding Officer.
Moved by Councillor Revita, seconded by Councillors Aala, Eliot, and Rilyon, and Kaasi. There being no objection, therefore, Resolution Number 376 is included under an assigned business. Oh, sorry, 312. 312. Some more inclusions. There being none, therefore, back to the main motion as amended 10 times. Is there any objection? There being no objection, therefore, the calendar of business as amended 10 times is hereby adopted. Let us now proceed to the first item under an assigned business.
First item under, under an assigned business is Resolution Number 367, "A Resolution Confirming the Annual Budget for Calendar Year 2026 of Barangay San Isidro, Tagom City", amounting to 9,776,000 pesos only.
So, Councillor Kokilia is recognized. Can you make an omnibus presentation for 367, 368, and 369?
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. Considering that the three resolutions, namely, Drop Resolution Number 3667, 368, and 369 are of the same subject matter, all relating the confirmation of annual budget for calendar year 2026 of Barangay San Isidro, Barangay Madaom, and Barangay Magupu North. I move, Madam Presiding Officer, to dispense the reading of the full text of Drop Resolutions Number 367, 368, and 369 respectively. I assume.
Moved by Councillor Kokilia, seconded by Councillors Uys Salazar, Wakan, and Ong. There being no objection, therefore, the reading of the full text of Resolution Numbers 367, 368, and 369 are hereby dispensed with.
I move, Madam Presiding Officer, for approval for second reading, Drop Resolution Number 367, 368, and 369. I assume.
Moved by Councillor Kokilia, seconded by Councillors Aala, Revita, Kaasi, Ong, and Wakan. Is there any discussion?
Just a brief presentation, Madam Presiding Officer, on the the procedure for the evaluation, Madam Presiding Officer, that upon, after evaluating all the submitted documents, Madam Presiding Officer, to highlight for Barangay San Isidro, there were notable notation for the discrepancy and the, the total of eight findings were noted. And subsequently, Madam Presiding Officer, it was revised by the barangay last November 12, 2025. And in the course of their final review, their annual budget for Barangay San Isidro confirms the provision of the Local Government Code. So meaning to say, Madam Presiding Officer, the reckoning of the performance level of barangay in the submission is based on the items of their findings and observations for their discrepancies. So they have eight discrepancies in the course of their submission. And for the case of Barangay Madaom, there were seven findings noted. And subsequently, on November 17, 2025, it was revised, returned on, it was requested for revision. And finally, the final review was on November 28, 2025. And after the final review, all the items set forth under the law that comprise on the attachment of their annual budget were duly complied with. For the case of Barangay Magupu North, nine findings were noted. So of all the three, Barangay Madaom got the highest score. Next is Barangay San Isidro. And next is barangay Magupu, barangay Madaom, rather. And then last is barangay Madaom. And there were nine findings. And it was finally resolved and resubmitted to the City Budget Office for final review on November 28, 2025. And finally, the Budget Office certified that all the requirements set forth under the law for the submission of their annual budget were duly complied with. Hence, this is subject for confirmation. Thank you.
So, thank you very much, Councillor Kokilia. Thank you also for making sure that all the requirements are in place. Okay, please proceed, Councillor Kokilia.
On the amendment, Madam Presiding Officer, that Drop Resolutions Number 367, 368, and 369 be subjected to form and style, I assume.
Moved by Councillor Kokilia, seconded by Councillors Aala and Eliot. There being no objection, therefore, Resolution Numbers 367, 368, and 369 are all subject to form and style.
I move, Madam Chair, that all members physically present on this 21st Regular Session be co-proponent of this resolution. I assume.
Moved by Councillor Kokilia, seconded by Councillors Aala and Rilyon. There being no objection, therefore, all members physically present shall be co-proponents of these three resolutions.
I move finally, Madam Chair, that Resolutions Number 676, 368, 369 be approved for second and final reading.
Moved by Councillor Kokilia, seconded by Councillor Aala. Those who are in favor, please raise your right hand.
In favor, Councillor Perez, Councillor Aala, Councillor Rubinos, Councillor Eliot, Councillor Revita, Councillor Uys Salazar, Councillor Kaasi, Councillor Kokilia, Councillor Ong, Councillor Wakan, and Councillor Rilyon. Madam President, all members present, physically present are in favor.
All members physically present being in favor, therefore, Resolution Numbers 367, 368, and 369 are all approved on second and final reading. Next item.
Next item is Resolution Number 370, "A Resolution Confirming the Sangunian Kabataan annual budget for calendar year 2026 of Barangay Magupu North, Tagom City", amounting to 1,535,471 pesos and 30 centavos only.
Councillor Kokilia.
Madam Presiding Officer, since the three resolutions, namely, Resolution Number, Drop Resolution Number 370, 371, and 372 are of similar nature, they are all relating the request for confirmation for barangay Sangunian Kabataan SK annual budget for calendar year 2026. May I ask approval from the Presiding Officer that this be presented omnibusly?
Yes, proceed, Councillor.
I move, Madam Presiding Officer, that the reading of full text of Drop Resolution Number 370, 371, 372, the reading of its full text be dispensed with. I assume.
Moved by Councillor Kokilia, seconded by Councillors Aala, Revita, and Rilyon. There being no objection, therefore, the reading of the full text of these three resolutions are hereby dispensed with.
I move, Madam Chair, that Drop Resolution, Resolutions Number 370, 371, 372 be approved for second reading.
Moved by Councillor Kokilia, seconded by Councillors Aala and Ong. Is there any discussion?
Just again, Madam Chair, so that the public may know on the procedure for the review of the process of the joint committee, that one, number one, what was being found out or observed for annual budget of Sangunian Kabataan of Barangay Magupu North was that of some of the revisions. And the revisions were complied on November 27, 2025. And it was certified by no less than the barangay treasurer, Ms. Francis N. Iroila, that barangay SK barangay North has a budget comprising of the 10% of their total estimated income for calendar 2026 is about a certified that is in, consistent with the annual budget set forth under this Drop Resolution Number 370. For the case of, again, for other barangays, Madam Chair, for SK barangay Visayan Village, and SK barangay San Isidro, all SK annual budgets complied with all the stipulations set forth under the law in the preparation for their annual budget. Hence, it was duly certified by the Budget Office that all annual budgets for SK barangay North, barangay Visayan Village, barangay San Isidro were duly complied and hence are requesting for confirmation to this 10th Sangunian Panglongsood, and again, requesting for support of the members of this council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion, any amendment?
Amendment, Madam Chair, that the stipulations set forth under Resolutions Number 370, 371, 372 be subjected to form and style. I assume.
Moved by Councillor Kokilia, duly seconded by Councillors Rilyon, Kaasi, Aala, Wakan, and Rubinos. There being no objection, therefore, these three resolutions are subject to form and style.
And, Madam Presiding Officer, as a matter of amendment, that all members of this hall physically present, members of the 10th Sangunian Panglongsood, be co-proponent of these Resolutions Number 371, 370, 371, and 372. I assume.
Moved by Councillor Kokilia, seconded by Councillors Aala and Rubinos, and also Wakan. There being no objection, therefore, all members physically present shall be co-proponents of these three resolutions.
As recommended by the three committees, Committee on Finance, Committee on Youth, Committee on Barangay Affairs, that these Resolutions Number 370, 371, and 372 be approved for second and final reading.
Moved by Councillor Kokilia, that this be approved on second and final reading, seconded by Councillors Rubinos, Aala, Revita, and Rilyon. Those who are in favor, please raise your right hand.
In favor, Councillor Perez, Councillor Aala, Councillor Rubinos, Councillor Eliot, Councillor Revita, Councillor Uys Salazar, Councillor Kaasi, Councillor Kokilia, Councillor Ong, Councillor Wakan, and Councillor Rilyon. Madam President, all members physically present are in favor.
All members physically present being in favor, therefore, Resolution Numbers 370, 371, and 372 are all approved on second and final reading. Next item.
Next, we have Resolution Number 373, "A Resolution Confirming Supplemental Budget Number Two for calendar year 2025 of the Sangunian Kabataan of Barangay Kanukutan", amounting to 171,000 pesos.
Our SK Federation President, Raan Rilyon is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. I would like to ask for consideration for an omnibus motion since Resolution Numbers 373 and 374 are of the same nature, Madam Presiding Officer.
Proceed.
Thank you. Madam Presiding Officer, I move to dispense the reading of the Resolutions Number 373 and 374, series of 2025.
Moved by our Councillor Raan Rilyon, seconded by Councillors Aala and Rubinos. There being no objection, therefore, the reading of the full text of these two resolutions is hereby dispensed with.
Madam Presiding Officer, I move for its approval on second reading.
Moved by Councillor Rilyon, seconded by Councillors Aala and Rubinos. Is there any discussion?
Discussion, Madam Presiding Officer. I would just like to present the findings and/or observation of the, from the committee report.
and/or observation of the, from the committee hearing that happened on November 26, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. at the Session Hall. So, the SK supplemental budget of barangay Kanukotan, amounting to One Hundred Seventy One Thousand, and SK supplemental budget of barangay Apukon in the sum of One Million Nine Hundred Ninety Six and Five Hundred Fifty Seven Pesos and Seventeen Centavos were presented and deliberated thoroughly by the invited Sangunian Kabataan officials for budget confirmation of the committee concerned. In the course of the final budget review, Ms. Rowena J. Bries, Budget Officer Three, confirmed that the Sangunian Kabataan of barangays Kanukotan and Apukon submitted the revised and/or compliant SK supplemental budget that has conformed to the provisions of RA 11768 and other applicable accounting, auditing rules and regulations in the disbursement of SK fund. That would be all, Madam Presiding Officer.
So thank you for that information. Let's proceed to the amendments.
Amendment, Madam Presiding Officer, that all members physically present be co-proponents of the said measure.
Move by Councillor Rilyon, that all members physically present be co-proponents, seconded by Councillors Ahala and Kaasi. There being no objection, therefore all members physically present shall be co-proponents of this resolution.
Madam Presiding Officer, it was recommended during the committee hearing that these measures be approved for second and final reading.
Move by Councillor Rilyon, seconded by Councillors Ahala and Kaasi. Those who are in favor, please raise your right hand.
In favor, Councillor Perez, Councillor Ahala, Councillor Rubinos, Councillor Elliott, Councillor Revita, Councillor Uisa Lazare, Councillor Kaasi, Councillor Kokilia, Councillor Ong, Councillor Wakan and Councillor Rilyon. Madam President, all members physically present are in favor.
All members physically present being in favor, therefore Resolution Numbers 373 and 374 are approved on second and final reading. Next item.
Next item is the Resolution Number 375, A Resolution Adopting The Tagom City HIV Investment Plan For Calendar Years 2024 to 2030.
Councillor Uisa Lazare is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. For and on behalf of the Committee on Health, allow me to present Draft Resolution Number 375, Series of 2025, A Resolution Adopting The Tagom City HIV Investment Plan For Calendar Years 2024 to 2030. Since all members of this council were already furnished with copies of this draft city ordinance, I move to dispense with the reading of the full text of the same.
Move by Councillor Uisa Lazare, seconded by Councillors Ahala and Revita. There being no objection, therefore the reading of the full text of this resolution is hereby dispensed with.
Madam Presiding Officer, move for its approval on second reading.
Move by Councillor Uisa Lazare, seconded by Councillors Ahala and Kaasi and Revita. Is there any discussion?
Point of information, Madam Presiding Officer, this plan is the product of close collaboration among the City Health Office, the Tagom City SCI HIV and AIDS Council, Planning and Budget Offices, Youth and Social Welfare Sectors and partner organizations such as Achieve and Tahas. It is aligned with the National Seventh AIDS Medium Term Plan and supports our local vision of achieving zero AIDS by 2030. HIV remains a national public health concern and Tagom City recognizes the need for stronger local action. The plan lays out practical strategies for prevention, testing, treatment, protection and stigma reduction, as well as clear investment and monitoring mechanisms to guide our response in the next six years. The City Development Council has adopted the plan and the local health board has endorsed it to the Sangunian. The Committee on Health likewise recommends its approval. With this, we respectfully seek the support of the Sangunian Panglongson for this resolution so we can continue strengthening our city's HIV response.
Thank you for that. Proceed to the amendments.
If there are no other floor amendments to be introduced by the members of the Sangunian, I move that all members present be co-proponents of this draft resolution.
Move by Councillor Uisa Lazare, seconded by Dato Eric Perez. There being no objection, therefore, all members physically present shall be co-proponents of this resolution.
I move that this piece of legislation be approved on second and final reading.
Move by Councillor Uisa Lazare, seconded by Dato Eric Perez. Those who are in favor, please raise your right hand.
In favor, Councillor Perez, Councillor Ahala, Councillor Rubinos, Councillor Elliott, Councillor Revita, Councillor Uisa Lazare, Councillor Kaasi, Councillor Kokilia, Councillor Ong, Councillor Wakan and Councillor Rilyon. Madam President, all members physically present are in favor.
All members physically present being in favor, therefore Resolution Number 375 is approved on second and final reading. Next item.
And next, Madam President, we have Resolution Number 312, A Resolution Congratulating David T. Ong King, RND, a graduate of the University of the Philippines di Liman For Ranking Top Five In The November 2025 Nutritionist Dietitian Licenseure Examination.
Councillor Revita is recognized.
Copy were given in advance to this August body. I move to dispense with the reading.
Move by Councillor Revita, seconded by Councillors Ahala and Rilyon. There being no objection, therefore the reading of its full text is dispensed with.
I move for its approval on the second reading, Madam Chair.
Move by Councillor Revita, seconded by Councillors Ahala and Rilyon. Is there any discussion?
Discussion, Madam Chair. During the committee meeting last Wednesday, we had the privilege of inviting our top nature, Mr. Ong King, who was joined by his beloved mother and beloved father. Madam Chair, is a proud residence of, Mr. Ong King is a pride resident of barangay Magupu West and an alumnus of Magupu Pilot Central Elementary School. Distinguished colleagues, this resolution seek to formally recognize and congratulate Mr. Dick Ong King, a proud Tago menu and a graduate of University of the Philippines di Liman for placing top five in the November 2025 Nutrition Dietitian Licenseure Examination. Mr. Ong King achieved an outstanding general average of 92.15%, bringing great honor and pride to the city of Tagom. His exemplary performance reflect not only his dedication and perseverance, but also the caliber of professionals our city continues to produce. In accordance with the City Ordinance Number 1007, Series of 2022, this recognition likewise entitles him to receive a cash incentive of 20,000 pesos, reaffirming our city's ongoing commitment to support and reward high-achieving Tago menu students. Madam Chair, this resolution aims to commend Mr. Ong King for his remarkable accomplishment and at the same time inspire more of our youth to pursue academic and professional excellence. That would be all, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you for that. Please proceed to the amendments.
Amendment, Madam Chair, that all members present shall be co-proponent.
Move by Councillor Revita, seconded by Councillors Uisa Lazare and Rilyon. There being no objection, therefore all members physically present shall be co-proponents of this resolution.
I move that this piece of legislation is approved on second and final reading.
Move by Councillor Revita, seconded by Councillor Ahala. Those who are in favor, please raise your right hand.
In favor, Councillor Perez, Councillor Ahala, Councillor Rubinos, Councillor Elliott, Councillor Revita, Councillor Uisa Lazare, Councillor Kaasi, Councillor Kokilia, Councillor Ong, Councillor Wakan and Councillor Rilyon. Madam President, all members physically present are in favor.
All members physically present are in favor, therefore Resolution Number 312 is approved on second and final reading. Let's now proceed to measures on third reading.
For our lone measure on first reading, third reading, we have Draft City Ordinance Number 99, An Ordinance Institutionalizing The Special Assistance For Livelihood And Income Generation Or SALIG Program Of The City Government Of Tagom, Providing Appropriations Thereof And For Other Purposes.
Those who are in favor, please raise your right hand.
In favor, Councillor Perez, Councillor Ahala, Councillor Rubinos, Councillor Elliott, Councillor Revita, Councillor Uisa Lazare, Councillor Kaasi, Councillor Kokilia, Councillor Ong, Councillor Wakan and Councillor Rilyon. Madam President, all members physically present are in favor.
All members physically present being in favor, therefore Draft City Ordinance Number 99, Series of 2025 is approved on third reading. Announcements. Councillor Kokilia is recognized.
Madam Presiding Officer, under Committee Report Number Nine, Series 2025, Committee on Finance, there are items here that needs to be referred to the City Treasurer and all the stipulations here that needs correspondence from the Secretary to the Sangunian. May I request the Secretary to the Sangunian to prepare correspondence to the respective offices for their compliance? Thank you.
Okay, so the Secretary to the Sangunian is hereby directed to make the necessary correspondence.
Another, Madam Chair, may we know from the Secretary on the result of our request to barangay New Babversa? Have they replied with the... May I move for a few minutes recess, Madam Chair?
Let Chair discuss for a few minutes recess. Session now resumes.
May I request the Secretary, Madam Presiding Officer, to reiterate our request for them to submit to the committee so that appropriate action of the committee for legislative support will be finally calendared for second reading. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, so please take note of that, our Secretary to the Sangunian. Some more announcements? Councillor Revita?
If possible, Madam Chair, because again, we'd like to congratulate all members of this Tenth Sangunian Panglongson for the performance of all members of the Sangunian during the PCL contest, dance contest. So it was attended by all local legislators throughout the province of Dabao del Norte and there were six contestants or six LGUs that participated in the dance contest. It's a rare opportunity, Madam Presiding Officer, that the members of the council showcased their hidden talent in dancing. So congratulations for having that financial award amounting to 20,000 pesos. Again, because as a result, can we have a meeting, short meeting after the session in the Vice Mayor's office? Thank you.
Best dancer, Councillor Kokilia. Some more announcements? There being none. Since all matters have been acted upon, if there is no objection from the floor, the Chair will now declare the adjournment of session. There being no objection, session is now adjourned.